Regular city council meeting. I am Cecilia Taylor. This is the mayor. This is a hybrid meeting with city councils, city staff, and members of the public participating in city council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited. I would like to introduce city council members present and staff present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, city council members Maria Dorr, Betsy Nash, and Jen Woolison. Staff present include city manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolte, City Attorney Nirah Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. And again, echoing a welcome to our February 27th regular city council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, if you are participating in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, after the mayor calls for public comment on the item you wish to speak, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine at that time. I would also like to announce that we are currently doing our annual recruitment for all of our advisory bodies. This recruitment is through Thursday, March 27th. We have vacancies on all seven of our commissions. For more information, you can give me a call at 650-330-6620, or visit menlopark.gov/commissions. That includes my instructions and intros at this time. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Item C, Agenda Review. Agenda Review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from city council members under City Council Members Report. Does the city council wish to pull any item from the consent calendar or information items for discussion to be heard after the last regular business item F2? Councilmember Woolison.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I would like to bifurcate consent calendar items E1 and E3, separate from E2, please. Just an opportunity to vote on them separately.
Separately, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other modifications requested by city council members?
Just a question. So based on that, will we be voting for E1, E2, and E3 separately?
Sorry to clarify. I'd like to be able to vote on E2 separately.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is Item D, Public Comment. Under Public Comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. It is helpful but not required if you state your name and city of residence. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda. Therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. At this time, I will call for public comment on our consent calendar. Forgive me, I'm out of order here. Ms. Heron, can you call public comment for non-agendized items under General Public Comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are participating in person and have not already, please complete a speaker card at the back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. And in order to gauge the amount of speakers we have for General Public Comment, this will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. If you are in person, now's the time to bring that speaker card up to the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or cellphone, please press star nine now. Okay, we will be closing public comment. And Mayor Taylor, I currently have six speakers for Item D, General Public Comment for items not on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. We'll keep the regular three minutes.
Thank you. Okay, and our first speaker will be Maya Seawold, followed by Dee Dee Dickey.
It's nice to see you all and thank you for your service to our beautiful city. As you probably know, I'm sort of on the periphery, but have always been involved in our beautiful city. I was raised here and have lived here most of my life. My husband and I have enjoyed living in Sharon Heights since the 70s, I hate to say. But anyway, just a wonderful city to live in. We've never had, however, the atmosphere of fear in our neighborhood as we do today. And it is very troubling. We had a meeting that was attended by council member Dorr and Mayor Taylor sat in on it about two weekends ago. 125 residents came to the meeting because we have had an unprecedented amount of break-ins. It is very difficult for us all to function in an atmosphere of fear. A couple of people didn't come tonight because they're tag teaming being away from their home. They are that worried about break-ins. So there are several things that come to mind, the LPRs. These were all brought up in the meeting. LPRs, volunteer patrols. And we would like you, as our representatives, to put these items on the agenda at your earliest opportunity because, you know, it's only healthy for a city to act healthy and not in this constant state of being worried about leaving your house. And I also am very much a fan of police. So I've worked on the Citizens Advisory Council with Bob Johnson, also with the fellow that preceded him, and done the Citizens Police Academy with Drew. Remember when we saw that lady's sign? Very vivid instruction. And, you know, they're here to help us. So, you know, I was thinking back in all of this turmoil over the last four years and COVID and all that. And my response is, fund the police. They're here to help us. They're here to make us feel safe. So the more support you can give to our police, I think will be the safer for all of us. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dee Dee Dickey, followed by Derek Marsano.
Mayor Taylor, members of the council, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Dee Dee Dickey. I'm a Sharon Heights resident. I've lived there for eight years. I love this city. I am concerned about crime. I ask the city do two things in particular. One is to take the measures necessary to reduce response times to outlawing areas of the city. The second, which I'm going to talk at greater length about, is to fund license plate readers. I appreciate that the city considered a grant for license plate readers in the fall. I understand that that didn't move forward. I'm asking you to embrace it now. I'm a former public attorney for public agencies. I sat where your city attorney sits. I sat in that chair for state agencies for a number of years. I know how hard it is for public agencies to tackle difficult issues. But I've also seen public agencies address an issue. It takes time, it takes effort. I recognize there are privacy concerns with automated license plate readers. I get that. Other jurisdictions have tackled those issues. They've approached them thoughtfully. They've come to resolutions on those issues and they've implemented license plate readers. I am concerned that Menlo Park not be one of the last ones standing of not having a license plate reader so that anyone who wants to break into a house and doesn't want their license plate reader knows that they can come to Menlo Park. So my ask of the city is that you embrace this issue, really look into the privacy concerns, see how other cities around us and Marin, throughout the Bay Area, throughout California, have addressed these issues of privacy, how they've made their balancing, the ordinances they've written to thoughtfully address them, figure out what would work for this city and move forward. We all know there are great resources through the League of Cities, through other city attorney's offices that could be brought to bear that could assist this council. I know attorneys through the California Lawyers Association, public law section, the privacy section that could help, that could offer the city assistance. Please do whatever you can to move forward, address this issue thoughtfully, but do move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee Dee. Next is Derek Marsano, followed by Brian Kissel.
Hi, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'm a 30-year resident up on Siskiyou Drive. And we have, in that period of time, never seen the level of criminal activity that we're now experiencing. And I'm just here to support and echo comments from Maya and Dee Dee and to add my voice to urge you to look into this notion of license plate readers and to understand and take action on what can be done to improve monitoring, police monitoring in particular, in the area. You know, as you know, that part of the city is located adjacent to Interstate 280. It's, from what we're seeing, from the methods of operation on some of these burglaries, folks are, you know, in and out in a matter of a few minutes. And, you know, being able to access the freeway and, you know, get out of town literally in a short period of time, you know, puts us all, I think, at greater risk. We understand, or we heard at our community meeting from representatives of the police department that they're aware of some of these issues. They need funding, they need staffing to be able to more rapidly address and respond to incidents when they occur. We've had on the order of, I'm sure you're aware of the numbers, but if not, on the order of 14 residential burglaries, break-ins, literally in the last three to four weeks. Perhaps that might be, it might be more like from January 1st, but in a short period of time. So I'm just, like I said, I'm here to add my voice as a concerned resident to do what you can to address this issue of license plate readers and improve support for the Menlo Park Police Department. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Derek. Our next speaker is Brian Kissel, followed by Tyler Hawes.
Brian Kissel, also a resident in Menlo Park. Also wanted to reinforce the messages from Maya, Dee Dee, and Derek, as well as conversations we've had with Commander Dixon and Chief Norris, encouraging us to reconsider the decision about license plate readers and what other programs we can cost-effectively deploy. For example, the volunteer neighborhood patrol program, any others that the city council and the police department might recommend to address this. As I understand, this issue came before the city council in June of 2022, and there were issues around cost and privacy. And I don't think as many cities had adopted automated license plate readers at that time. I'm aware in San Mateo County, Foster City, San Bruno, Burlingame, and St. Carlos have all deployed it. And just recently, Happy Moon Bay, which decided not to move forward in 2019, is bringing the issue back up and likely to move forward on it. So I think a lot's involved over the last several years. And in talking to Chief Norris this evening, the original quote, as I understand it, was somewhere in the order of $250,000 upfront and $250,000 a year when the original proposal was made. Looking at the deployment costs in Palo Alto was substantially less. And I think a lot of the privacy issues that were identified earlier have been resolved by a lot of the other cities that we could look to for guidance on what's the appropriate balance of safety for our neighborhood and privacy of our citizens. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next is Tyler Hawes, followed by Kenneth Harris.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Tyler Hawes, and I'm here on behalf of Civic Bell. We're a locally owned and operated civic engagement technology platform. We kind of take the visual appearance of, you know, a traditional social media approach. But the key difference here is that we're purpose-built for productive civic engagement. And so I'm here just on behalf of Civic Bell to inform the council that we exist, that we're around, and kind of share a little bit of information about us. So the main couple differences here, the largest one, is that we're made for politics and we're here to foster that productive connection between local-level government officials, such as yourselves, and the general public. We offer a free-to-use, completely publicly accessible platform in which officials can send out a survey post or a discussion, and officials can, or sorry, residents, can then join that discussion, provide valuable feedback, especially for those who can't take the time to come to a council meeting like this one. It's a costly, time-costly thing to do. A lot of people have lots of things going on. And so online asynchronous methods, we find to be an opportune way to engage a wider swath of the public. So the key difference here is also that we verify that everyone using our platform is a real resident of the districts that they say they belong to. You know, other platforms may try to do this, but we really take it to the next level. So if you all, as officials, were to put out a survey, you'd have utmost confidence that everyone using the platform, everyone responding to that survey, or even putting a comment on a given post, is an actual verified and vetted resident. This is a widely adopted platform by local officials in the area, including State Assembly Member Mark Berman is using Civic Bell as a better way to engage with residents of this very area and then kind of up and down through the coast side and Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties. But we're local at this time. So kind of with that all said, if anyone wants to learn more about what we are, go to civicbell.com. You can contact me. I'm Tyler at civicbell.com. And I'd be happy to show you what's going on. Again, I emphasize, we're free, we're here for good, and we just want to help empower the residents of a local community to connect with their officials and vice versa, fostering a higher-quality grassroots productive civic engagement for all. So if I can help you with any of that, please feel free to reach out. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Yield my time.
Thank you, Taylor. Next speaker is Kenneth Harris.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenneth Harris. I'm a local Realtor. I have an office in East Palo Alto. I'm here to talk about Reverend Mother Campbell. They had her going-home ceremony today. The acknowledgement was magnificent in this presentation. I've been knowing her all my life. She deserved all the recognition that she got and more. She was a true matriarch of the community. And her spirit will always be in us. She will be sorely missed and lovingly remembered. My last words with her, we were out doing the petitions. She was talking about Onetta, and she was telling me how Onetta gave all of her kids' jobs, fed her kids, helped feed her kids, and turned her on to a lot of resources. You know, and, you know, I keep thinking about all of vitriol and the criticisms that I got from your constituency because, Ms. Taylor, like, we're going to make sure we keep that out of office, that she don't get back in. Her name is not on that park. It was a 40-year mistake. How does a 40-year mistake when you guys voted her in? Not you, but your previous council. All she did was pass out food. Well, you know, food was a problem in the community in the 50s, 60s, and 70s. Maybe now. But that cheese wasn't as bad as people said it was. Also, some of your constituents, when I was working on the Bell Haven, Nicholas Yelling supported me to the Bell Haven development when they were building it. And one of your constituents is talking about BMR, and she says, "We don't need no more poor people in the community." And this is exactly the things that Onetta was vehemently against, that she did not stand for. And also, we got an email about a plaque. Onetta deserves more than a plaque. She deserves, one of your, on your recreation commission said that maybe she should name a street after her, or maybe she should give her a bust, or maybe they should give her a statue in her name. You see, when something is named after someone, their spirit is represented in that name. And that spirit is a good name. We had an overwhelming, and we'd like to get the petitions black if you guys can't use them. We'd like to get them back. But that spirit that she represented still holds today, and it showed tremendously in the outpour, community outpour that she got. I'm not mad, I'm not a bully. Our family's not a bully. We want what's best for the people. That's all we want. It's not about me. It's about we are Onetta Harris. That's all. That's all. We are Onetta Harris. We just represent her spirit. That's who we represent.
Thank you, Kenneth. And that did conclude our speakers for Item D, Public Comment. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for the public comment. And just double-checking that we don't have anyone online.
I am not seeing any hands online at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next agenda item is E, Consent Calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. At this time, we have a request to look at items E1, E2, E3, well, actually, E1 and E3 separately from E2. Is that correct, Councilmember Woolison? All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion if there's no discussion on items, excuse me. City Clerk Heron, can you call for public comment on items E1, E2, and E3?
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our consent calendar items E1, receive and file the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th of 2023. E2, adoption of an ordinance related to the city's master fee schedule for aquatics fees. Or Item E3, updating the city council representatives to CCAG or various local and regional agencies. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, please engage a hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, And this will be the final call for public comments on our consent calendar items E1 through E2. Okay, so at this time, we will have one speaker. And Tom, I'll actually have you come right back on up. I have got Tom McCray on Item E2.
Awesome. Thank you so much, council, Mayor Taylor. I know we've gone round and around with the fee structure. And I'd just like to point out a couple things. One, when the RFP was presented, council requested that 30% to 70% of cost recovery was one of the standards. And what happened was, through the process, an adoption of a percentage that was actually presented as a 1% up to 3% for the first, you know, 1% for the first million, 1.5% for the second million, and 2% for the 2 to 3 million was presented. And actually, a contract was put forward that actually gave the operator no cost recovery the first year, and 1% or less than 1% moving forward after that. And with this new fee structure, that one of the things that was presented was that there would be a standard for a non-resident versus a resident would be the same. I believe that number is 35%, but I could be wrong. But that would be the standard. And then what was presented was a fee structure that did not reach that. So again, once again, council said we'd like this for our residents and non-residents, and that wasn't met. Unfortunately, in this process, SOLO has been pitted against the sheep organization. And SOLO is just a nonprofit youth organization. And I'm here as an advocate for children to try and provide the opportunity at the lowest amount of cost for all. One of the things that I want to throw out in this process is that, again, in the fee structure for our program, that we're disproportionately, youth nonprofit programs were disproportionately increased in terms of overall fees to start the whole process. But actually, we have no idea how much the operator makes or doesn't make because that's never been disclosed. And when the operator before decided he was going to discontinue operation, before he bid on the RFP, he wanted an additional amount increased. And it was discussed by council at that time to say, we have no idea how much money that operator is making. But I'm going to throw one more thing in here. We talked about residents and non-residents. And the contract that was approved by council, it says, "This is the percentage that we want in terms of residents and non-residents. My program is open to all. We are not closed at all. So if somebody wants to join our program, they're welcome to join our program." Tomorrow, I get to report our numbers in terms of resident, non-resident, to the city staff so that we can see what those numbers are. But if we fall short, for example, there are no teeth in the contract that say, "Well, this is the remedy for that." And so I'm just pointing out that this contract has holes in it. And so we'll hopefully be able to work with staff and come up with some solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. That does conclude our public comment for consent calendar items. At this time, Mayor Taylor, we can entertain a motion for items E1 and E3, if you would like.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Go ahead, Councilmember Dorr.
I'm happy to make a motion to move on E1 and E3.
Thank you.
If no one's second, I'll go ahead and second.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Dorr and a second by City Councilmember Woolison to approve the consent calendar with the exception of Item E2. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And now I'll turn the floor over to Councilmember Woolison.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Yeah, I just wanted an opportunity to vote consistent with the comments I made at the last meeting. So I will be voting no on the master fee schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any follow-up comments on Item E2 by anyone?
Vice Mayor Combs?
I just, it would be great if it's aligned with sort of protocol to have some clarity on whether council intends to, or council members intends something different than how they initially voted on this. I appreciate Councilmember Woolison saying that she was aligned with where she was. And so it would be And so it would be, for me, informative if other council members were different from that stance of being aligned with where they were when this subsequently came to the council.
I'm happy to share that I'm aligned with where I was in the last conversation.
I am struggling with this one greatly and have decided that I will stay aligned with where I was with the trust that staff will be working hard with the operator to take another look at fees and with the thirty-five percent differential in mind, and also doing whatever we can to reduce the fees for residents, as we heard strongly from them in the surveys. Thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate that, Councilmember Nash. I am willing to vote in favor, although I was not in favor. I think the point I made is clear. And I do stand by that point, but I do appreciate moving this item forward, given that there's been lots of discussion. And I do want to seem also responsive to your struggles and to also say that I'm going to end up someplace where I don't necessarily, because I do think it's, we hopefully will end up in the best place for the city, and it would be great just to move this along.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs, Councilmember Nash, Councilmember Dorr, and Councilmember Wallison. And I have struggled with this contract since the beginning. And I do understand that we need some data in order to figure out where we have challenges. And the only way to do that is to actually move forward. I am curious, just putting this out there, since Mr. McCray brought up that he is providing some data with, to the city tomorrow, that after the vote and this contract is approved, or this process is approved, that his feedback will be included in that. It's my request. I see head nods. Thank you. And I will entertain a motion.
I'll move.
It says no second or required. We will need a second.
A second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Combs and a second by City Councilmember Dorr to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending the city's master fee schedule to include aquatics fees to become effective April 1st. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes with City Councilmember Wallison dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is item F, Regular Business. Under Regular Business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The first regular business item is F1, amend the fiscal year budget 2023-24. And we have our team present, Brittany Mello, that will be doing the presentation.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. And I actually am proud to present Jared Hanson, our new Assistant Director of Administrative Services. He started with us last month, so he spent that time diving into all of our finances, and he'll be presenting the mid-year budget for your consideration.
All right, thank you, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, and members of the council. I'm proud to come before you today and present the amended fiscal year 23-24 budget. First, big thanks to our staff, Brittany Mello, the Administrative Service Director, Ronnie Singh, interim budget and finance manager, Adrian Patino, management analyst too, and Ying Chen, senior accountant, for all the hard work in getting this to this point and helping me get up to speed as well. Being here just a month, it's been a fun challenge to get familiar with what's going on in the timeframe. So thank you for all the help that staff has provided so far. Our agenda today, maybe if my thing will work, there we go. Our agenda today, we're going to go over the budget amendments that have been requested, talk about the impact to the general fund reserves, give a little overview on some grants funding, and then get further direction and adoption from city council. First thing that we want to talk about is the proposed budget amendments. And those budget amendments have happened since July 1st, twenty-one, twenty, excuse me, subsequent to the July 1st, 2023 budget that was approved by council. There have been additional amendments that have been approved, and those include the labor and side letter agreements, professional services agreement with the M Group for the housing element, as well as additional appropriations for the Bell Haven Community Campus, including partially your operations and expenses, as well as three additional FTEs to support that as well. There's also been two additional grants that were approved. These have not been reflected yet in the budget, and you'll notice that on the next slide as I talk about those, what those particular were. So on the next slide, we have the proposed budget amendments. This includes a total of 2.916 million in revenues and an additional 1.825 million in expenses. The top three revenue items were listed in the staff report correctly. The 0.555 million in transfers should have been listed in the staff report as a revenue instead of an expense. And additionally, there's some routine grant items amendments. These have been approved, but were not yet included in the budget. Those were listed in the analysis section in the staff report. These included the coronavirus response and release supplemental appropriations grant, both the revenues and expenses for that, as well as the CalRecycle expenses. While these adjustments were not clearly presented in the staff report, they do not change the overall amounts that are shown in the exhibit in the resolution or in Attachment G. As we move on there, the Bell Haven Community Campus changes proposed currently totaled 1.304 million. And staff is available to answer more questions on these capital expenses if needed. In total, by fund, the budget amendments include the revenue increases of the 2.915 million and the 1.825 increase to expenditures. And those also match what's listed in your attachments and in the exhibit of the resolution. Anytime we make changes to the budget, there's going to be some changes to the reserves for the general fund. And most of those are due to the increases in expenses in the general fund, because the emergency contingency reserve, as well as the economic stabilization reserve, are based on a percentage of total expenses in the general fund. So these balances are being increased appropriately as required to meet council policy for the minimum funding requirements. The strategic pension reserve, you'll notice there's a decrease in that for payment of the unfunded accrued liability. And overall, the decreases to the unassigned fund balance go from 2.6 million to 0.1 million for the proposed budget amendments. Now kind of some good news as we talk about that. We're really pleased to provide council with some grant funding information. And thanks to council support and direction on grants, staff have been hard at work identifying and securing grant funding. And then this is no small task, and it takes a lot of time and effort from staff in order to achieve this. So we're pleased to report that there's approximately 84.2 million in grant awards the city has received as of November 2023. These represent amounts which may span multiple fiscal years and come from a variety of sources, such as county, state, and federal. And again, these grants have not all been dispersed to the city at this point. Some of them are continued upon things that we do in the future as we work towards meeting those grant requirements and specific uses for those. Again, I just want to thank staff on that. These do take a lot of time and energy in order to get these different grant awards. So this is a huge accomplishment for the city and very proud of those. At this time, looking for council direction and recommending that council adopt the mid-year budget appropriation amendments as outlined, and looking forward to our upcoming new budget year and starting our planning for that. Just want to again thank council for all the direction that they provide, as well as staff for everything that you do in order to make the budget an easy process. And at this time, I'll open for any questions, if there's any from council.
Thank you for the presentation. Before we go to public comment, are there any clarifying questions from city council members? But this time, we'll move to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, for any member of the public who wish to provide comment on regular business item F1, amend the fiscal year 2023-24 budget. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating online, please engage a hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landlanyer cell phone, please press star nine now. Currently have one speaker, so this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item F1. Okay, so Mayor Taylor, we have one speaker. And our speaker will be Pam Jones.
Thank you. Good evening, council and staff. I have a question in regards to the grant funding overview. Well, I have a statement first, and that's to really applaud the city for doing the work so that we can get these grants. But I think it would be helpful if we knew exactly where the money was coming from for each one of the categories that's in there. So for example, Public Works, there may be, you know, three different grants in there. I have no idea. And so on. I think it would just be helpful for us to really be able to narrow down what is being supported by our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And that does conclude our hands and cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. And just to follow up on the question from public comment, Mr. Hanson, I'm not sure if you have that information available.
Hi, this is Brittany Mello, Administrative Services Director. We could certainly, pending council direction, provide a more detailed overview of the grants received that would require maybe a separate informational item, should the council prefer that, or perhaps us providing an additional attachment during the budget reports that we'll be bringing to council for the fiscal year 24-25 budget, as you prefer.
Thank you. I think it'll be helpful to have the additional attachment. At least we would know which department is receiving the grant funds. I think that would be helpful. And just going back to a procedural matter, and that is, we did receive a staff presentation. We heard public comment. We will be bifurcating the city council decision, starting with all items except for items related to the Bell Haven Community Campus. Then allow Vice Mayor Combs the opportunity to recuse himself from this item. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I'll be recusing myself from items related to the community campus because that change is driven by changes in the funding agreement between the city and my employer as it relates to that community center. So for that portion, I will recuse myself from the council discussion and the vote.
Thank you. So are there any clarifying questions from city council members? We can bifurcate it, the topic that Vice Mayor Combs has recused from. Councilmember Dorr?
Thank you. I had a question that was already answered, but I thought maybe the public would be curious too. Fantastic to see 84 million dollars in grants, and I'm so glad the city's gone after this. Actually, I have two questions. The first question is, are most of these grants for capital-specific projects, or are these also going towards our operating processes? Because I'm curious, you know, would there be a hole left if we finish a grant and there's not something left? And just want a little bit more clarification to share with the public on that. Thank you.
Certainly. So the 84.2 million represents a wide variety of type of grants, both for operating expenses and capital projects, very specific uses. One operating expense that comes to mind is running our city shuttle program. I think the survey was recently opened. Don't know if it's still open, if there's feedback left on that. But that could be an example of a program where we operate the shuttle, and we rely on multiple grants to help fund that. Those have two to three-year cycles, and we reapply every cycle. And we've been fortunate to receive that funding each time. If we were to not be as successful as we have in the past, we would have to look at how that operation could be funded. But other than that very specific example for that near-term horizon, over those 84.2 million grants, we did not anticipate any holes in our operating expenses.
Thank you. And another question, I know that the city explored some, explored other grants by getting a grant consultant to look at additional opportunities. And one of the requests I had made, or curiosities I had had, is if that funding could look towards projects that would bring in money from the Inflation Reduction Act or the bipartisan infrastructure law to support climate adaptation, climate mitigation efforts, but also streets and other things as well. I'm curious if any of this funding includes any surprise grants that we've already somehow gotten in just a few months, or just any insight there would be helpful.
Yes, thank you. So the city manager's office was able to secure the grant consultant a few months ago. And so they have met regularly with each of the departments to first learn about the needs from the departments and try to then research what grants might be available to meet those existing needs. And then they have been working on applications that have been identified. Grant cycles generally open, you know, at specific times of the year. So there might be things in the work where we don't yet have an opportunity to apply. My understanding is that there's some applications in the works. I'm not sure if any of those are specific to the items that you just raised.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So I wanted to confirm that the BEMA BRIC grant is in here, and that's about 50 million dollars for Public Works, and that's for climate adaptation.
Yes, the BRIC grant is included.
Are there any other questions? So at this time, there are, I believe, ten items on the list. So if we're bifurcating, we would take items one through five and then items eight through 10. Does that work, Ms. Herron? I'm using the list on the slides, page seven. Can you actually put the list on the screen, and then we can use? Oh, thank you.
Mayor, if I could just, the listing on
Uh, Mayor, if I could just, um, the, the listing on slide seven is indeed, um, the listing of the various funds that are going to be factored into the budget amendment. And one, one is, that you identified is the one for which the vice mayor is going to be recused. Actual, are, are you still in the discussion mode about, or?
No, we're actually ready to vote.
Okay. If you're moving to be ready to vote, then I think the actual action is associated with the resolution. And so I think it's from a, um, simplicity perspective, if the vice mayor's comfortable recusing on the overall vote, that would probably be the easiest thing. Otherwise, we'd have to, um, start the process of, um, recrafting the resolutions.
Yeah, my, my apologies for the miscommunication. I'm aligned with that approach.
Great. So then procedurally, does Vice Mayor just need to just step outside the chamber for a minute? And that'd be much appreciated. Thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve, or?
I'm happy to move to approve the resolution, um, amending the budget for fiscal year 23, 24.
And do we have a second? I will second. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Woolison, and a second by City Councilmember Nash, to adopt a resolution approving additional appropriations and amendments to the fiscal year 2023-24 adopted operating and capital budget. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes with Vice Mayor Combs recused.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. We'll give a few moments for Vice Mayor Combs to return to the dais. Thank you. And at this time, we've had an overquest for, to reopen public comment. So if the council is comfortable with that, um, Ms. Heron, you can go ahead and take the next public comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. And just to clarify, we are reopening this just for one late card that I did receive. Um, and again, this is for item D, general public comment. And so I would like to invite Greg Goodwin up.
Good evening, council. I'm here for just one purpose, really. My email has been blocked. I can't make, reach any of you by email. And, uh, this came after I sent letters that didn't agree with the decisions that with the decision the council made. And I'm trying to find out if you do that to everybody. And, um, under the Freedom of Information Act, I would like to know, I'd like a written response with regard to, uh, your policy and practice concerning blocking people's emails. Um, you're supposed to represent the citizens of the communities, your constituents. And, um, if we blocked from saying, uh, that we disagree with, uh, decisions you make, then that's a counterproductive process. And so I, um, would like to be, uh, I would like to know why, number one, and I'd like to know if I was just singled out, or if this is a common practice, uh, for the council. Thank you very much, and God bless.
Thank you for your comment. And Greg, if I could have you come to my desk just briefly? Thank you. And Mayor Taylor, thank you for reopening. We will go ahead and close public comment.
Things I'd just like to generally respond. Um, the city's email system has for some time had some issues blocking. I've had my own emails blocked, uh, when I'm sending from my Gmail account to city, to the city, and so I, I hope my colleagues aren't blocking me. Um, there, there are some, some known issues, but I, I would like to say that, um, uh, to be clear, no one's, uh, email or, um, uh, address is, is blocked by, by the city purposely. If that happens, it is, is a technical error. I'd also like to point out that, um, uh, for, for most, if not all of us, our numbers to reach us at are available. And, and I think all of us have some form of, of, of office hours. I have office hours every week where you can find me. And so no one here is in any way trying to not communicate with residents across a number of issues by which we may agree or, or disagree, agree with them. And so to be clear, like, there have been historic issues with the city's email system. Um, and, and, and all of us are, are available and can be contacted through many different ways and platforms.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Goodwin, for bringing it to our attention about what's happening with your emails. Moving to the next regular business item, this F2, the finer regular business item, and that is to, and accept an addendum to the Parks and Recs Facilities Master Plan to include pickleball and provide direction on implementation. Here to introduce this item is our Library and Community Services Director, Sean Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Um, I wanted to first just acknowledge, um, some of the staff members who contributed to this report. They're not able to join in person tonight because they're at a professional conference. But I did want to acknowledge and thank Kiefer O'Hara, Recreation Coordinator, Tricia Mullin, Library and Community Services Supervisor, and Ashley Walker, Management Analyst. Uh, they did a lot of work on this, um, product here, along with, uh, the support of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, this item is to accept an addendum to the Parks and Recreation Facilities Master Plan, and primarily to include pickleball, the super fun sport that you're seeing here on the screen. It's loads of fun. Uh, the recommendation is to accept, um, the addendum, uh, presented in Attachment A to the staff report and provide a direction on implementation. Little background, the city council directed city staff to work with the Parks and Rec Commission to develop this focused addendum to include pickleball, because when the Parks and Recreation Facilities Master Plan was developed in 2019, pickleball had not yet emerged as a sport requiring the use of City of Menlo Park recreation facilities. But there was a lot of demand, a pilot program was started, and so, um, you know, it's kind of grown into doing an addendum to the master plan in order to kind of have a holistic approach. So the Parks and Recreation Commission and city staff developed the addendum in Attachment A, well, quite a bit of analysis and community input went into it, and the Parks and Recreation Commission recommended that it be accepted. Um, a little bit about the Parks and Rec Facilities Master Plan, that's an effective and essential tool to help guide decision-making in the near term and over the long term for the city's parks and recreation facilities, and we're fortunate to have many very, very nice facilities throughout town. New community needs do emerge from time to time, and those needs may evolve over time, such as the emergence of pickleball. Um, so when those changing needs may result in capital improvements to Parks and Recreation Facilities, the recommended best practice is to evaluate those needs in the context of the city's overall facility master plans, ergo, the addendum. So the focus areas of the addendum are three. One is to provide recommendations related to current and future pickleball facilities in Menlo Park. Also, to establish a recommended timeline for periodically reviewing the Parks and Rec Facilities Master Plan to provide updated information and create new addenda if needed to reflect those evolving needs and circumstances. Again, the master plan was created five years ago. Things have changed, they'll probably continue to change. So having like a regular timeline, once proposed, is every two years to revisit it. Um, and then also, um, for the addenda to create a framework and a reference point to help guide the formation of future changes or addendums, addenda to the master plan in the future. So there were five recommendations in the addendum related to pickleball. Um, they're, they were presented in no particular order, they're just really numbered for convenience, um, starting with at Nealon Park. There currently are four pickleball courts at Nealon Park, they're on one former tennis court. Uh, the recommendation from the Parks and Rec Commission is to continue those on a temporary basis, uh, so don't make them permanent yet, although they've been there for a few years now. Um, pending the evaluation of noise mitigation measures that could be brought to bear at the court, there are some residences nearby, um, they've, uh, noted that they can hear the noise. Um, so looking at that, uh, possibility at Nealon Park before contemplating additional expansion. Um, Kelly Park, there have not been those concerns, the, the, the courts are used there. The recommendation is to, um, continue those, dedicate them permanently, the four pickleball courts on one of the two tennis courts, um, that are currently there. Also to look at noise mitigation measures, uh, mainly because the noise from the US 101 freeway actually can be, is audible on the court, so it would be kind of buffering the noise in the other direction. Um, also because the city council, as you're aware, um, the Willow Oaks Park Improvement Project is currently well underway, um, so the recommendation is to leverage the opportunity of that project to potentially construct, um, new purpose-built pickleball courts there. That would be subject to further review, uh, by the city council, so nothing, no done deal there yet, but since that's a project that's underway, could be considered as part of Phase Two for council's consideration. Um, uh, another recommendation, a substantial one, is to conduct a citywide feasibility study for potential capital projects for more pickleball access throughout town. This would be a look at all of the city's parks, um, all the joint-use facilities that are owned primarily by local school districts that we operate in tandem, um, with those schools. Um, also development projects in the pipeline, and there are a couple actually that the council's aware of that do include a public recreation component that could accommodate pickleball and any other location opportunities. So such a study would evaluate each of those opportunities for their feasibility, the cost, the accessibility, any site constraints, noise impacts, um, parking, compatibility with other uses, potential partners, funding, and so forth. So really kind of looking at the whole, um, the whole, um, package, if you will. And then that would be used to establish baseline data to inform decision-making in the context of the city's overall capital improvement needs, and in particular, as they pertain to, uh, recreation facilities and parks. And then finally, um, as mentioned earlier, a, a timeline for future reviews of the Parks and Recreation Facilities Master Plan. What's recommended is every two years to, to do a revisitation of the plan. Have there been any changing or emerging community needs as they relate to our Parks and Recreation Facilities? Um, and, you know, just sort of establish a cadence for that to happen. Uh, there are some additional considerations outlined in the report, um, a proposed implementation timeline, um, particularly related to the pickleball feasibility study. There are some other higher priority projects of this spring, particularly the opening of the Bellhaven Community Campus. So city staff is proposing that if city council directs to pursue a pickleball feasibility study, that that would, um, and it be initiated in summer of this year after the BHCC opens. Um, and if that's the case, then city staff anticipates that the results of the feasibility study would be available for city council review, um, next winter or thereabouts. Also with tennis and pickleball court fees and court signage, I know city council's aware that on January 9th, um, the city council adopted an ordinance to amend the city's master fee schedule, um, and that actually eliminated the tennis key fees, which are the fees for just drop-in play at tennis courts. Um, reservations are still accepted at courts for folks who want to reserve ahead of time. Um, uh, there is still a fee for reserving the courts. Um, city staff's in the process of, uh, posting new signage at the courts to kind of identify which courts are reservable and which aren't, and which ones are pickleball, and which ones are tennis. Um, so very, very nice upgrades there. Um, the court reservation schedules are available on the city website, and they're actually very accessible, um, by a mobile device. You can actually check the schedules, you could actually reserve a court from there. Um, so that's a very helpful, that's there now on the city's website. Um, the new signage would have QR codes and, and links to make it really easy for people at the courts to go ahead and, and look that up. Um, also included with the report is, um, a kind of a summary of status updates about recreation facility projects. Um, that's in Attachment H to the report, happy to answer any questions you may have about that. Uh, I'm sorry, that's in Attachment I to the report, those, uh, project status updates. And then, uh, related to the impact on city resources, um, city staff estimates that the cost of consultant services to conduct the pickleball feasibility study, um, would be lower than the city manager's spending authority limit, just to give you kind of a rough order of magnitude. Um, and again, the process might take around six months once initiated, and the recommendation is to initiate it in summer. Um, so city staff, uh, should city council so direct of us to pursue that, we, we recommend to develop a budget proposal for those services, um, for city council's review in the context of the upcoming fiscal year 24, 25 budget deliberations. Um, there's some additional information, uh, in the addendum portion of the report. I won't go through the list here, you can see it on the screen, and it's listed in the report, but just, uh, raising that for awareness, um, in case you have questions about any of those. And that concludes the presentation, and, um, happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Before we go to public comment, are there any clarifying questions from council? Councilmember Woolison?
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, for that presentation and for all the work, um, that's going into this. Um, so for clarification and to, um, clarify things for members of the public, we're talking about, in terms of adding capacity of actually more courts, um, this coming summer to commence potentially a feasibility study, um, about kind of making the pie bigger. Um, but when would, so the, the study takes six months, so we're looking now at 2025 to get the results of the study, for it to get on a council agenda, um, and then for some decision to be made about, uh, where to put the courts, or what priorities, or what, when can pickleballers anticipate additional courts being built realistically? Are we looking at like two years, five years? Um, just to give people, to manage expectations on, um, how this will play out?
Thank you for the question, councilmember. Um, the answer, I think, really does depend somewhat on what the study reveals, as far as like what are the recommended solutions. Um, something like converting an existing tennis court is something that can be implemented pretty rapidly, whereas constructing a brand-new court where none has existed previously, or there's some existing infrastructure that needs to be torn out, like a parking lot, you know, that obviously would take quite a bit longer. So as I sit here, I can't really say, but I, I do think what's proposed here is for like a decision, uh, an informed decision would take place like in the winter of, uh, 24, 25.
Um, and I'm also curious about, um, the Willow Oaks Park mention, um, because I would assume that the feasibility study may include Willow Oaks as a potential location, um, to add capacity. So I'm, I'm wondering, is the plan to look at that separate than the feasibility study, Willow Oaks Park, or it, well, is it part of the feasibility study?
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify that. That wasn't made clear in the report and addendum, so thank you again for that opportunity. I think the, um, the intent on the proposal would be that it would be undertaken as part of the feasibility study, the idea of having that holistic approach.
Is there an option that, that's helpful to hear? Because my interpretation of this was, no matter what, the Willow Oaks Park was going to include a pickleball court or two. Um, but you're saying instead of that moving forward, there would be first this process and the consultant, and then a decision. and the consultant, and then a decision in next winter before things can move forward on that?
Yes, that's what's recommended. Now, the Parks and Recreation Commission did kind of highlight two parks in particular for, you know, just really make sure they're considered Willow Oaks, because obviously there's a capital improvement project that's kind of ongoing right now. And a Burgess Park, because that one has come up quite often as a, as a potential opportunity spot. But they're just recommendations, and the idea is that the feasibility study would inform them.
Thank you. And I'm curious, there's no mention of considering Neilon Park for additional expansions. Could you elaborate on that?
Yes, thank you. I wouldn't say that the intent was to take Neilon Park off the table, not by any means. Obviously, that's an area that many of the players would like to see more access. However, you know, there, throughout the process, there were some questions and concerns about noise at the nearby residences, tennis users at the park, you know, not wanting to lose more space. So again, the feasibility study would really need to take a closer look at that. That, that's the recommendation before we do further expansion.
Another question, on noise mitigation and that concern, was there any conversation with Parks and Rec Commission about changing the hours? Because I know right now they go until 10:00 PM. Was there any conversation about having them close at 9:00 PM, for example?
That topic came up sort of tangentially. The Parks and Rec Commission didn't really dive into it in much detail, because by the time that question had arisen, they were already kind of focusing in on like a feasibility study and looking at some noise mitigation measures. And so the, the hours didn't really stay kind of in the center of their focus.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have two more questions. Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. So my, next question is about usage at Kelly Park. So the, there's data here about usage at Neilon Park of the pickleball courts. And I know, just from what I've heard anecdotally, that Kelly Park's not as highly utilized. Curious if you have any, I mean, you don't have to have counts, but any insight you can provide on how those courts are being used over in Kelly?
Yes, thank you. So anecdotally, and I think that will be supported by evidence that we're looking to gather, the Kelly Park pickleball courts are less used than the Neilon Park pickleball courts. However, they are used. I've personally observed folks playing pickleball out there on, on several occasions. We had a kind of mini tournament out there that was well-received, but it's, it's not at capacity, that's the anecdotal evidence. What staff is preparing to do is in the spring and summer, when the courts tend to be more utilized, is to do another round of more comprehensive counts, actually at all of the city's tennis courts. But anecdotally, they're certainly less used at Kelly.
Do you have any sense of like the order of magnitude of the less usage? I mean, I get that they're less used, but is it like you could go by there and there might not be anyone playing multiple hours a day? Or, or is that just information you can get back to me?
There are certainly times of day when the courts at Kelly Park are not being used. There are other times of day when, you know, they're being used. And I think, just anecdotally, in the staff report and addendum, there was a survey of tennis court users, this was kind of before pickleball came on the scene, asking tennis court users, which courts did they play at? And Kelly Park was certainly like the least used. When talking about order of magnitude, just like in that survey, 64% of tennis users responded that Neilon Park was where they played, whereas 5% responded that Kelly Park is where they play.
That's, that's helpful, thank you. And then my last question for now is the fifth recommendation regarding a review of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. That seems separate than the pickleball issue. Is that just a general master plan recommendation?
Yes, thank you. That's more like a general recommendation. This addendum was really focused on pickleball and didn't really contemplate the whole other universe of, of recreation facilities out there. But it did seem important to provide some kind of mechanism to also capture some of those other changes not related to pickleball, and that's what recommendation number five is.
And then in absence of that type of procedure, what would be the typical updating of a master plan? Or there would not be an update and we'd wait till we did a whole new one?
One reason why this recommendation is brought forward is that the master plan, as it is written in 2019, doesn't include any particular mechanism for revisiting the plan. So it would have to be catch-as-catch-can or in response to some issue that emerged or from city council directions. So this would add a little bit more of a, a set cadence for it.
Thank you very much.
Council member Nash.
Thank you. So I have a question about, in addendum one, table one, which is review of pickleball courts in other local jurisdictions, it's on page F 2.7. And I thought that was an interesting table, which lists pickleball courts per 10,000 residents, for example. Did you, when you were gathering this information, did you gather any information about how close these courts were to residences? Whether they were using any noise mitigation and what the hours were for, or any other information?
Yes, thank you. Staff has begun to collect some of that information anecdotally from other jurisdictions. It was not part of this, the development of this table. In regard to things like distance of the courts to residences and sort of noise impacts, my recommendation would be to undertake that as part of a feasibility study, so that all of the data is like uniformly collected, it's uniformly measured. So we certainly could do that, but I, I think I'd feel more confident if we were to do it in that context.
Thank you. Are there any other clarifying questions? Council member Dorr?
Yes, thank you, council member Nash, for directing us towards that table. A question that this spurs for me, do we have a sense of the per capita pickleball player in different cities? I'm curious if there's, because I understand that this is per resident, but I'm curious if there is any data there saying, how many pickleballers are there in each city in the peninsula?
I, I'm not privy to that information. It may be hard to get, but anecdotally, it seems like there's a pretty fair number of them in our region who are really enthusiastic about the sport, for good reason, because it's a lot of fun. We certainly can, and I think it's a good idea, to try to collect that information from Menlo Park. Might be a taller order to try to collect it in other jurisdictions, but it's a, it's an interesting concept and it would be helpful to have that data. So we'll give that some thought and see what we can do there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Just a couple of follow-up questions, and that is just about courts that are available, specifically Kelly Park. Do you have any data prior to the use of pickleball with tennis courts and access? I know there's a few local tennis instructors that use that space. So just wanted to know if you have anything. And I'm asking because your tennis court survey is from 2021, it's a couple of years old. So just wanted to find out, do you have any, any other data that's more recent?
Yes, thank you. We did do a somewhat more recent survey of recreation and community programs that was primarily in the planning phases for the Bell Haven Community Campus, and there were a couple of questions about tennis and pickleball, but they weren't really specific to each of the locations. So that 2021 survey, I think, is the most recent that's very specific by park. Now, a feasibility study would certainly gather that information fresh this year.
Do, do you know if there's ever been discussion as to why the usage is low at some of the tennis courts? Maybe accessibility? Because at that time, I believe you needed to purchase a key through the city?
Yes, I can really only speak like anecdotally to that based on like some of the free-form comments that people have either submitted in past surveys or, you know, during discussions such as this one. I think some of it has to do with just location, whether a court is centrally located in the city or if it's more on the periphery. I do think the tennis keys probably did inhibit some casual players from drop-in play, because you couldn't just walk up and play, you had to get a key, and it's just kind of like a extra steps or even a financial barrier. Some of the courts are not as accessible, like La Entrada, that's located on a middle school campus, it's not available during the school day. So, you know, it's just less convenient for people. And if, it's kind of like if a shop's not open convenient hours, people kind of tend not to go there because they go to some other shop that is more available. So those are some of the anecdotal kind of observations I can share in response to that, that question.
Thank you for that information. This is my last comment before we go to public comment, and that is, was there any input from the Youth Advisory Commission?
A great question. There really was not input from the Youth Advisory Commission on pickleball specifically. There doesn't seem to be a, a big amount of interest from the Youth Advisory Commission on this topic. We certainly can bring it to them in the context of a feasibility study, not quite in alignment with some of their, their current areas of focus.
Okay. And I'll follow up on that one a little later, but just, I think it was council member Dorr that brought up the Parks and Rec's master plan and when we updated. And I'm just, you know, looking for information about what our youth want to see, so I don't want any input to be specific to one topic. Make more sense for it to be open, so that that way they can provide feedback as to what they are looking for, what they may want to use a space, a space for. And-
Excellent suggestion, thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to go to public comment, Ms. Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item F2, except an addendum to the park and recreation master, or fat facilities master plan to include pickleball and provide direction on implementation. If you have not done so already, please complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. So I currently have two cards, so this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item F2. We had one additional virtual hand raise, that brings us to a total of three speakers on this item. We will begin with Julianne Hansen, followed by Joseph Grass. And Julianne, if you can bring that close to you, perfect.
Yeah. Hello, sorry. My name is Julianne Hansen, and I'm an eighth grader at Hillview Middle School. And I'm on the tennis team, and tennis season is actually starting in a week. We rely on Neilon Park tennis courts for several months of the tennis season, for matches and practice. Last year, we had over 34 kids across four tennis teams, which is a lot of kids. The loss of one of the five tennis courts at Neilon Park to pickleball severely impacted us. This impact was not mentioned in the city staff report. I asked, I ask that pickleball be elsewhere in Menlo Park, because tennis courts are used very often by students as well as adults. City council should not just listen to the wealthy adults about topics like pickleball. Just because they're higher end in the community, in the community, doesn't mean that their thoughts count more than young adults' thoughts. The council has not reached out, as far as what I know, to, to my public school students about Menlo Park facilities or community issues this year. I, I've, I think they don't care about our opinions, and I know some of you do, but it has to be a team effort. I'm on the student council, we call ASP at Hillview Middle School, and this we're, this year, we also haven't been approached, approached regarding any issues that the city might have. Going forward, I'd appreciate having all opinions listened to from everyone in the community. I'd like there to be a council member that checks in with student council, with student councils in middle school and high schools in Menlo Park, and that we need to hear students' opinions and voices, it's not just the adults' community, it's ours too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julianne. So our next speaker will be Joseph Grass, followed by Pam Jones.
Hi there, I'm Joe Grass. That was my daughter, Julianne. And I have three kids that have gone through the Hillview Middle School and the tennis program. My two boys are now in college, Julianne is an eighth grader in the, in the tennis program. And I want to address the, the Neilon Park tennis courts and pickleball, and just be specific about Neilon. First of all, I want to open with, I think pickleball is great. Anything that gets people out exercising is fantastic. I think it's great for older people like me that can't quite run around as far, they're smaller courts. But we want to reach out to everybody, including the, the young people in the city. So right now, Hillview has to split 34 kids or more, I've lost count, into four different teams, and having practices is really problematic. When you have matches with other schools, it goes really slowly. And then after the tennis season ends, you've got more use of the courts by the kids, and the kids are getting frustrated that the courts are just too full. So losing one court is a real, is a real impact to the team and the kids. It's other problems with the community, I really don't see Parks and Rec completely reaching out on this whole issue. Like, the tennis instructors have not been addressed, it's hard for them to book block time like they used to, and that's important for getting kids into the system and then becoming adults and playing. I'm still astonished that Parks and Rec wanted to eliminate even more courts at Neilon, and that was just, you know, just showed a real disconnect with, with the tennis community. So I think also, one other issue, building the, the pickleball courts is, you know, it's great, it's a big issue, but there's some maintenance issues that are being neglected. Like, there are two separate water fountains at Neilon Park that have been inoperative for over six months, maybe longer. People have been asking, and I, you talk to people in the tennis courts and pickleball, and they're like, when's that going to get fixed? The wind blocks of the tennis courts are torn, one of them's like sitting on the ground, nobody's fixing it. And so before we do this build-out, I really think we need to properly interact with the whole community, find out who's using the courts. I mean, the survey just says, yes, people use pickleball courts and they play tennis, but it doesn't say when, it's only a small sample of like three days. So before we approve the plan today for pickleball, I think we need to ask staff to go back and just re-engage a bit more with the community, because we're really essentially making that extra pickleball court at Neilon permanent by building seating and fences, and it just seems like it's, it's going to happen without doing a little bit more community outreach. So against people, some of the tennis people are like, why don't you pick like, you know, the Burgess Gymnasium to add a pickle court, pickleball court, or the gymnastics, or pick a random basketball court? I want to keep it, I don't want things to get heated, but some people are mad out there, and I think we just, a bit more community engagement, especially with young people and the tennis team would really be helpful going forward. And I think pickleball is great, I think there's room for it, and, you know, raise my property taxes, I'll pay more for anything as far as getting people out and exercising. So thanks a lot for your work in the council, and thanks to the staff as well.
Thank you, Joe. And our final speaker will be Pam Jones.
Thank you again. I have a, a couple of things that I noticed when I went through the portion of the report, and we're asking for money for a feasibility study, but it looks to me with some of the courts that actually what needs to be done has already been done. For example, at Kelly Park, there's already four pickleball courts, they're set up temporarily on a tennis court, but it seems to me to have them temporarily is a good way to have multi-use of a court. So in other words, whenever it's pickleball season, you have, have it set up so that pickleballers could play, and when it's tennis season, you have it for tennis. So that may be something that would, you know, work for the Hillview students, and it was really, really appreciated them coming forth and sharing that information. I also noticed that there is, there was a place in here to build a soundproof or soundproof wall or some kind of sounding wall. And I want to point out that, that it has been asked for actually a few decades to have that entire length on facing 101. on facing 101 for Kelly Park as well as the tennis courts and now the pools. That, that, we have a real fence there to, not just to protect from noise, but in some ways it'll also help to protect from pollution. And the other thing is, I'm just wondering about the, the cost of this feasibility study. We're at a time where we're saying that we have a deficit and it seems to me to add one more thing that is a high priority is, may take away from something else that really serves the majority of the people here. So I hope that you take a different kind of look at what we're doing in regards to pickleball. And I don't think it's necessary for us to create any type of programs redoing our courts in such a way where we now have, Menlo Park is the pickleball center of the universe. I think that we need to really pay attention to what all of our residents want. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who provided public comment. I appreciate hearing your perspective and Julianne, we are listening. Thank you. And just wanted to ask one last question specific to the survey. And that is, were these Menlo Park residents, were there residents that live near the tennis and pickleball courts or was it just open to anybody to access?
Thank you, Mayor. Are you referring to the 2021 Tennis Court User Survey?
Yes.
I don't have the information at hand as far as the resident, non-resident breakdown. That survey was conducted of tennis key holders. At the time, there were six hundred and fifty or thereabouts. I don't want to speak from memory and get the percentages wrong, but my recollection is that the majority of those tennis key holders are residents. We haven't mapped their specific addresses to where we could like talk about their proximity to one court or the other. We'd have to look more closely at that.
Thank you. My next question is, you stated earlier that there is a place on our website where folks can reserve a space at a court, whether it's tennis or pickleball?
Yes, so that, all that information is on the website and it shows which courts are reservable, which ones are not. And there's a way to kind of go through that process online.
And as far as which one you can reserve and which one you cannot reserve, is that because it's in use? Or is it because it's not available to reserve?
The latter. At least fifty percent of the courts are not reservable so that they're available for drop-in play.
Thank you. And then the other is that, is there a way to call in to reserve or the only way to reserve space is online?
Folks could also call the recreation center or the gymnasium by phone or they can walk in to the recreation center or gym. So we have all those options.
And that information is public knowledge?
Yes, it's also posted on the same website. It's also available in other areas where we talk about this program. And the new signage will also have the phone number and that information.
Okay. Are there any other questions before we have a council discussion on this item? Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. Was there any effort to reach out to the Hillview tennis team as part of this report?
Yes, staff did reach out and speak to folks representing as coaches from Hillview. We actually reached out to the school site, spoke to one of the directors of their athletic program who oversaw tennis. So it was sort of like that level of connection. Now, that was in 2023. There hasn't been a more recent contact, but that did occur.
Councilmember Willison.
Did you consider, I assume, well, is there a chapter, I don't have the full Parks and Rec Facility Master Plan in front of me and I didn't look this up before tonight, but is there a section in there about tennis? Or what's, what's the status of tennis in the master plan?
Yeah, so again, I'm also working from memory of the master plan. It wasn't really organized by sport. It was really, it's really more organized by the individual facilities. And what are the amenities at each facility and the recommendations are kind of per facility. So kind of sprinkled throughout the report are various recommendations about tennis, but, but not looking at it as overall, like what is the need or demand for tennis citywide? It doesn't do that.
And have you thought about, do you anticipate the feasibility study also incorporating the tennis needs and feasibility of tennis courts as well? Because there definitely seems to be a issue between tennis and pickleball. And so my, I'm getting a little bit into my opinions here. My concern is that by looking at pickleball in a vacuum, we might be, especially if some of the recommendations that might come out could potentially lead to a cannibalization of tennis courts. It seems like those have to be looked at in tandem and even going beyond that, and I'm really going to complicate things, is if we start looking at developments that could come online and we're looking at a scarce resource of recreation space that could potentially be utilized for a multitude of fun things. We might then be debating not just between pickleball and tennis, but potentially between soccer, pickleball, tennis, basketball. So I'm just wondering, as you think about space to recreate in the city, how you are looking at the need and feasibility of all of this?
Yes, thank you. That's an excellent question, Councilmember. It's kind of mentioned in the recommendation around the feasibility study, but it doesn't make it explicit, which is that, yes, the consideration of those other potential or related activities such as tennis in particular, because they're quite closely related, would be part of the feasibility study. That is, looking at one of the opportunity locations and saying, well, okay, is it possible to build a pickleball court here? What would the cost be? And then what would the impacts be to other recreational uses? And I think first on that list would be, would be tennis. So it would look at it, look at those impacts on tennis in particular. And I think because of the close relationship between pickleball and tennis, they're quite similar. They're racket sports. They can function on the same court. For example, one of the commenters talked about like hybrid courts that could convert uses. Really, you would need to have a more of a look at tennis needs throughout the city in order to make that assessment of pickleball feasibility.
So I guess one of my recommendations, and are you looking at us to tell you whether we think this is ready for primetime now? Or are you looking for us to just say, we want minor edits? Because I might have higher structural thoughts and I don't know if that's the level of feedback you're seeking tonight as we look to get this over the finish line. Because I definitely don't want to delay action on some of these things, but I also want to make sure we're thinking about it properly.
Yes, thank you. So process-wise, and others may jump in, but I'll take a first pass at it. What's proposed here is the addendum, which really is comprised of a number of recommendations with some supporting information behind them. And I think one of the key recommendations would be the pickleball feasibility study. And process-wise, what's recommended is for that study to, first of all, be subject to city council authorization for like consultant services in the context of the budget deliberations this June. So that's the first checkpoint. And then a second checkpoint would be reviewing the results of a feasibility study, like around a year from now or so in the next winter. And that would be another opportunity for the city council to kind of give additional direction. Of course, any and all direction from the city council right here tonight is very much welcome, but those are some of like the milestones that are sort of laid out there with multiple opportunities for, supported by some of the data, in particular from the study that the city council could weigh in about.
That's helpful. So I can wait to give my thoughts and let others ask some more questions.
Vice Mayor Combs.
So Mr. Reinhardt, could the pickleball feasibility study turn into a racket sport capacity study or analysis? Like, right, is that possible? Or would you see that as too far a departure from how you see it? How you, too far a departure of the direction you're seeking to get from council?
No, I think what you're suggesting is right in line with what the feasibility study as proposed would encompass. When you say racket sport, I think we're really talking about pickleball and tennis. Whereas, you know, badminton, racquetball, things like that probably wouldn't be part of it. So if we're really talking about pickleball and tennis, then the answer is yes. I think it's already kind of baked in.
Well, you're excluding sports, so you're going to get emails tomorrow.
Well, the ping pong people can come after me later.
No, I think, yes. I think somewhat to where Councilmember Willison was going, like if that's the heart, then, then the name, the nomenclature, the title means a lot. And because to say you're doing, you know, pickleball feasibility study and if you are really looking at like, again, our capacity for racket sports, then I think we should say that. And I think it's important that the title reflects what we're doing, but also I think it is, it is more inclusive. And, and I think again provides more transparency to the community.
Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to say that I've heard from numerous residents how life-changing pickleball has been, both activity-wise and socially. My top concern for pickleball is for the residents nearby and the noise issues it that comes with it. And pickleball seems to have a unique noise issue. And so residents, I believe that the Pickleball Association says that courts should be at least two hundred feet from residences. Please, someone needs to check that, but that's what I have been told. Certainly at Nealon Park, they are much closer. It's apartments with not much landscaping and it's a huge impact on the residents there. So prior to even going to a feasibility study, I would like some answers, some solutions to that. Also, as it goes to Willow Oaks Park, while it doesn't, it may not be right near this, many of the single-family residences, it again will be right next to apartments. And in other areas, it will be right next to single-family residences as well. So I think that that's the primary issue that I would like to see resolved before we even proceed with a racket sport. And I like the idea of framing it as not just pickleball as all racket sports, but I think we really need to address that issue. It's a huge quality of life issue for our residents. And it's people who, now that people are doing much more from home, it's not, even if we restrict nighttime hours, it's affecting people during the day. One resident who's actually wrote to CCI a while ago, and I've had a few infrequent contacts with her. She's got four kids at home and it's really creates a problem for their school, for their sleep. It's a real issue that I think we must address. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to echo something that Councilmember Nash said of just having the chance to have a lot of conversations. And I got invited out last year to join some folks to learn how to play pickleball. And what people have told me again and again is that it's an important source of exercise, important way to get outside, important way to build community. And so I can appreciate the, the care and hope and consideration that folks have had about really wanting to see us move forward in this study or in this, not just a study, but also in including it in the plans that we have. So I do support what Councilmember Nash said about what can we do to address current needs on the courts that affect tennis and pickleball players today. So one is thinking about sound barriers, or maybe restricting the hours at Nealon to help address the issues of the loud sounds. Two, I've heard from people saying that they're concerned about the lighting, that lighting, I don't know if that's been fixed yet, but there were some issues with lighting at Nealon Park, for example, that were causing issues or the water fountains that were mentioned and some other seems like more base, baseline things that would be helpful to start with, with any resources that are available or any time capacity that's available. Starting there, before thinking about dedicated lines on the, on the courts or the feasibility study or seating, those all seem like really nice to haves that makes sense to come a bit later. I'm glad to hear about the desire to have a more comprehensive count in the spring and summer, so really eager to see that. I'm supportive of this idea of making it a tennis-pickleball-capacity study. After we, you know, looking, looking to explore that once we take care of these more like the lighting issues and those basic things. I was concerned to hear from the public commenter about issues that currently make it hard for coaches to book block times that are needed. And so would appreciate staff having a continued conversation sooner than a feasibility study to see what's going on there, to see if there are any hiccups that could be resolved. And that's my, that's my comment. Thank you.
So I'll provide some additional comments. First, Julianne, thank you very much for, for the comment. Much appreciated. One, I'll say that I know the mayor is, would be more than happy to come and speak to the student council at Hillview. So definitely follow up with her. But I would also say that like, much like you did tonight, you want to go to government. You don't want government to come to you. Because if it comes to you, then it's going to come with an issue already framed. So what I would say to you is exactly what you did last night. Come and you need to be proactive in engaging government and encourage your, your friends, your fellow student council members. I know that like it can, if there's an issue of making dinner in bedtime, then we will make arrangements as far as when you can make your public comment. So that it can suit your schedules. But, but again, like I said, exactly what you did tonight, this is what's right. To come to government and be very clear on what, what you want and what you think is the right course of action. Regarding what's before us, I think I'm aligned a lot with where Councilmember Nash is. I don't know if we're at the moment of, of doing, whether it's a capacity or feasibility study. Couple of issues come to mind, like I did spend some time at Nealon Park this, this weekend. And maybe this is something that has been covered and I just missed it, but I don't even know why we chose the court closest to the apartments as the pickleball court. It seems as though that that would have been moved to the courts that are further in the park or maybe even the court that's right next to the play structure with all the screaming kids. And so I don't know. Again, that's a discussion. Again, maybe that's something I missed. But I am, and I know there are different issues, but I am sensitive. Because if you look right at, at Nealon Park, on one side of that park, speaking of the play structure, we, we had an issue of the zip line next to single-family residences. And the city was very responsive. And very responsive to the extent to that, like at least last time I went, that zip line was not operating. And I know that there's been this statement that the city would come and unlock it certain times. I've never seen it unlocked. It's always locked. And so that with regards to the single-family homes on one side of the park, we were so responsive to the issues and concerns of noise. As it relates to the multifamily housing on the other side of the park, it seems like those concerns have landed on deaf ears. And so that very much concerns me. And again, like I say, I don't know that as far as the current issues we have regarding pickleball have been addressed. I would also like echo the, the public comment. I think maintenance is a real issue. Again, before we get into feasibility study, before we're, you know, building the Taj Mahal pickleball courts, the, yeah, the wind nets are in a horrible condition. Some of the fountains are not working. The paths at Nealon Park are horrible. They need to be repaved. And, and it doesn't seem to me that like, you know, a new coating of asphalt is going to be very expensive. Although I know the city manager is going to tell me, no, it is really expensive and let me tell you why. Because there are all these things I didn't consider. But there are some of those base things that I think are missing and that need to be addressed. And the third, I would have to say with regards to Willow Oaks Park, I'll be very clear, like I'm not supportive of a pickleball court there. We had that discussion. We had that discussion, and the discussion ended in a decision not to do that for a number of reasons. And if that were going to be an option, like, with, with, as you guys know, Willow Oaks Park has been near and dear in my heart, but I also wanted to be really sort of thoughtful and fiscally responsible in how we approached that. And so there were a lot of things I wanted to do with that project, which I didn't do. Like, as far as, like, moving around some of the tennis courts, and, and I remember, I think, Miss Nagai, the deputy city manager was like, well, there's like, there are some utilities under that, and like, leveling that thing is going to be really expensive. You don't think it's going to be expensive, it's going to be really expensive, Drew. And so I was responsive to that, and that's why I, I, I was really sort of focused on what we could do there. And so for me, then, coming back and saying, like, well, then, let's put pickleball courts there, it's like, the discussion for pickleball courts there was one that should have been had holistically, and if they were going to be integrated into that plan in some way different than how we initially thought or proposed them, then that's the time that it should have happened. I, I'm personally, again, just speaking for myself, not interested in revisiting that now as, as an, as an addendum. And so, again, those, those are, those are my thoughts, and where I'm at regarding this. And thank you for all your time and effort in this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. I wanted to just touch on the noise issue, that's something that we can deal with immediately, and that is to close the pickleball courts at Nealon Park at 8:00 p.m. instead of the current time of 10:00 p.m. And where I am at on this item, I echo the same statements as Vice Mayor Combs, Councilmember Nash, and actually, all the councilmembers up here that have expressed concerns. For me, I look at what our priorities are as a city, and that's how I gauge what I'm willing to consider. Pickleball is not on that list right now. The other is budgeting, considering where we are financially. Adding this, after we've had a request from folks that are dealing with security issues in their community, to me seems to be a little out of line. And we are headed into priorities this Saturday, and one of my biggest concerns is about creating more space for our youth, because I feel like that's what we need to do at minimum as the adults. So that's where I am. I question, four pickleball courts equals one tennis court? Or is it two to one?
Generally speaking, and in reality, here in Menlo Park, four pickleball courts sit on one tennis court. It's four to one.
At this time, I'm definitely not supportive of making the four pickleball courts exclusive at Kelly Park, partially because I believe the usage is based on accessibility, and because the tennis courts haven't been that accessible to the community, I believe is the reason why there's low usage, not necessarily a financial barrier. So if it's easier now, because I believe you don't need a key to use the, the tennis courts, and I'm not sure if that's widely known, that's the other piece, is that when we're looking at courts in different neighborhoods, that we should be doing immediate outreach to the neighborhood, not necessarily general, not that we don't want general input, but I think we need to be a little bit more specific when we're looking at community input. And, let's see. And I don't think I need to provide any, any additional comments, considering what my concerns are have actually been brought up by other councilmembers. Councilmember Dorr?
A question and a clarification for us, but also for the public. You mentioned that the cost of a feasibility study would be within the city manager's, within the level that he could just approve on his own. What, what is that level, again? And how much do we think the feasibility study could cost?
Yes, thank you. Well, not having solicited, provided a scope of work or solicited quotes, so we can't speak to, like, how much it would actually cost, but based on past experience with studies of this type, we, we were comfortable providing that rough order of magnitude. The city manager can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe his, his independent spending authority is somewhere in the area of $85,000 or something like that. We anticipate the study would be far less than that. We just sort of offered that as sort of like a scale.
Thank you. I am interested in exploring that, maybe once we take care of these things. I want, I want that to be clear, also for my, my colleagues, that I, I am eager to do that tennis-pickleball study, to, to have more engagement with the schools, to have more engagement with the community, to use that study that you're going to be doing in the spring and summer to understand the numbers, because this is an important way that people are building community and getting outside is through tennis and pickleball. And so I want to make sure that we are, are thinking about how we're making sure, along with taking care of some really important priorities for the city, also providing those spaces of joy, levity, and community that make our city the great place it is to live.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I do want to add one point of clarification about the zip lines, and the reason why that got the attention it did is because it was after hours use, it was a safety concern, and it was in the middle of the night where, well, after 10 o'clock through the middle of the night, where there were parties going on, and it was a, an issue which is, does not in any way reduce the concern of the noise for the other apartments, it's just different, different issues.
Through the mayor, could I take the opportunity to just build on Councilmember Nash's comments? There was an earlier question from Vice Mayor Combs about why the one tennis court was chosen for the pickleball courts at Nealon Park, and the primary reason, this was before the noise was even on anyone's radar, was that that's the one court there that is completely enclosed as one single court, one single tennis court within a fence, whereas the others are gang together with tennis, and the two uses are just really not compatible in the same fenced-in space.
Thank you. Councilmember Willison?
Thank you. I appreciate all of the comments. Amazing how one little pickle in a ball creates so much interesting conversation. A few thoughts, the noise issue, I think, is real for people, and I think we would be foolish not to try to address that to improve the quality of sleep and light, ability to enjoy one's backyard and not in their homes. And I think there's, there's some ideas, solutions that other communities have used around that. I'm wondering, the opening of the Bell Haven Community Campus provides an opportunity to excite people about all that, you know, that area has to offer. And so I would suggest that staff, you know, make it exciting. I know that the courts were not part of the redesign of the Bell Haven Community Campus, but there's no reason why we can't, you know, make that part of the celebration and kind of take another look at the Kelly Park courts. I'm fine supporting Mayor Taylor's desire to hold off on making that permanent at Kelly Park, especially given the circumstances that are changing with the Keys and the launching of the new community campus, and we can wait and see kind of what transpires there. I, one thing that I didn't see in the addendum, when I think about pickleball and feedback that I've heard from pickleballers, and this is kind of speaking to the public commenter, Ms. Jones, talking about, you know, Menlo Park being the pickleball kingdom or whatever, is that it seems like there's a, a desire amongst some pickleball players to have a very concentrated number of courts in one place. And I didn't see in the addendum, and maybe I missed it, but like, what are we trying to accomplish? Because I think as we go about a feasibility study, or thinking about these racket sports, are we comfortable having access kind of throughout the city for different, to play one-off games? Or are we looking for concentrations for kids to have, you know, tournaments in tennis, or for the pickleballers to get to congregate, like I've heard them express? Because I think that will yield different solutions on how to cite these different sports throughout town. So I think we need to be really intentional. Maybe it's when we do launch a study, or another look at this addendum of what, what we're actually trying to solve for here. And then, in terms of Willow Oaks, I don't have any, you know, that's across the street from my district, too, so I can only imagine the, the popping sounds that I'm going to get feedback on. But I do think, whether we keep that in just to study as a feasibility or not, it shouldn't be its own standalone item in the recommendations. I would feel more comfortable, you mentioned that Burgess was also kind of highlighted by the commission, and Willow Oaks was highlighted by the commission. I feel like if that's mentioned in the feasibility study, that's fine, but I wouldn't have it as a separate recommendation in the addendum as, as potential sites. And then, while I'm pretty much in alignment with everything my colleagues have said in terms of addressing kind of these basic maintenance issues, which I, I'm sure Ms. Nagai and other members of staff are taking detailed notes on and are, are wanting to address, I'm sure they're either aware or going to be aware, and there's, I'm sure, a lot of complexity involved, odd complexity that tends to happen in public works. That, yes, I want to address those things, but I do think, to Councilmember Dorr's point, that there is a real, you know, community benefit in offering these recreational opportunities. And I, I, it might not be one of our top priorities, and I don't see it rising, I don't, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, we're having our goal-setting this Saturday, and I just don't see pickleball being in the top five or six. But that doesn't make it any less important for a lot of our residents. And so I don't want to indefinitely put off tackling this. So I, I, I think it's a good investment to do this, if it's not going to, you know, drag down or substantially delay some of these lower-hanging, very important items. So I hope, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willison. Councilmember Dorr?
I'm curious, with the feasibility study, would there be a chance for us to, to chat about it more at the time when we're looking at other things in the budget for what we would maybe want to do in the next financial year? Because I would like to continue the conversation on this, but I'm, I also don't want us to say, we'll talk about it later, and then we don't talk about it for a really, really long time.
Thank you. Actually, all of the comments that have just happened are very welcomed and very helpful, so thank, thank all of you. Just in response to Councilmember Dorr's specific question about timeline, already in the recommendation is to bring back to city council another discussion about a potential feasibility study in the context of the new fiscal year's budget deliberations. So that's, that was sort of already contemplated in the timeline, so if the full council is generally in agreement about that, you know, maybe we could, like, get that timeline to revisit the topic, so that there's some sort of date certain out there for folks who are very interested in this topic, but there's still, you know, more opportunity for the city council to weigh in with that additional context.
Thank you. Councilmember Willison?
Not that the dollar figures that you were throwing around aren't significant, because we're stewards of our taxpayer dollars, but even more important for me right now, having been on council now for a few years, other than like a dollar amount, is the capacity issue, both from a staffing side and from a community, you know, from a agenda management side. So when we look at the impact of doing that type of study, those are more the trade-offs that I'm interested in seeing, on how much time, how much effort that we're going to be taking, that's going to be taken up by that.
Thank you, Councilmember Willison. I, I agree. I agree, and I appreciate your taking notes diligently, Mr. Reinhardt. Just had a, hopefully a final question about the space over at Nealon Park. I noticed that there was a banner up that says USA Pickleball Official Team. So are we creating space for professional teams? Are we creating space, space for Menlo Park residents?
No, I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. That banner is not authorized by the city. We've, we will follow up with the folks to take it down.
I appreciate that. And also, just wanted to agree with the comments about looking at this opportunity as providing a community benefit. I think Menlo Park has a lot of recreational opportunities and also space, enough space to create space without taking away space. I want to give a great appreciation to our Parks and Recs Commission for all the work that they did. We do hear their recommendations, and at this time, you heard our feedback, we are interested in, possibly interested in the feasibility study down the line. I will work with the city manager to determine when that would come back, hopefully before budgeting in June. Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt.
Oh, Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I'm wondering what we can do now to, for the residents about the noise? What approach?
Yes, thank you, councilmember. I was actually just going to offer up a few thoughts on that. So there are some neighboring jurisdictions that have implemented some solutions, they, they take the form of different kind of like sound baffling kind of material that's suspended from the fence. Some of it has varying levels of effectiveness, that's something we could pursue in the short term, so we've already done that initial exploration. So I think I'd heard among the council an interest in trying to resolve that sooner rather than later. It's fairly cost-effective, so unless there are objections or questions about that, we've kind of made a note here that we should keep that moving forward without waiting for a feasibility study.
I think that sounds good. I've heard from a couple sources that they don't work. And so it would be very helpful to, like, go back to these other communities that have, anyway, just find out before we invest in it and become yet another.
Yes, totally agree, and the reviews have been kind of mixed. I think some of it is site-specific, some of it is the different products out there, so we want to be thoughtful, and we want something that actually works. So that's, that's something we're still working on.
Councilmember Willison?
I've heard that there are some rackets that actually mitigate the noise. So I don't know if any communities have, like, mandated certain rackets, and, I mean, now we're really going to go down a rabbit hole here, but I'm like, if the money would be better, if that actually works better, and the money of a fence versus like a rebate program on the real, the rackets that work, I mean, it's something to, to, just wanted to point that out.
And they're also trying to put together a new ball that works well. Apparently, they have one for indoors, but not for outdoors yet. It's, creates less noise.
Pickle innovation.
Yes, the technology of pickleball is, is moving quite quickly. And then the other thing I heard was looking at potentially like the hours of operation at Nealon Park. So it might be a combination of those factors, but I think we'll take that as direction to kind of keep working on that.
And just a request to work with Hillview, and I don't know how that ends up, but just to work with them for court time.
Yes, absolutely. I thank you for the opportunity to just remind the council that the, the city does have a joint-use agreement with Menlo Park City School District, specific to Hillview's use of the tennis courts, and with their season coming up, it's, it's time for us just to touch base with them anyway. So thank you for that.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, and at this time, I do not believe we are voting on this topic.
Yes, mayor, I wouldn't mind just clarifying that the council is not accepting the addendum. I wouldn't mind clarifying, it's a lot of good, good discussion. I, I do see some benefit of trying to make revisions to the addendum, bring that back, even if it, with the attempt of reflecting the various feedback from the council. So in addition to the request that was identified about, you know, the scoping of cost implications and time and resource implications of a feasibility study, I think there's also, I would like to get clarification about bringing the addendum back, because I think it would be good to close the loop on the addendum as opposed to leaving the addendum open-ended.
Thank you. Will do. Councilmember Dorr?
Request, based on a comment that councilmember, or a question Councilmember Willison asked, it sounds like there are no, there was no addendum or there's no content in the master plan that specifically calls out tennis. Correct?
Well, tennis is mentioned in the context of like the individual facilities, but not like as a holistic thing, yep.
Okay, in that case, I think it would be helpful if this, just like the proposed study, was reflective of tennis and pickleball in, in the addendum, and so maybe addressing that and filling out that direction is something else I would ask that hasn't been said yet. ask that hasn't been said yet.
I'm supportive. Do you, would you like a vote?
We don't necessarily need a vote, I just want to make sure that there's at least a majority of the council. I'm seeing a number of head nods, so it's going to take a little bit of time. We'll figure out the timeline of when it comes back, but we would look to try to update the addendum.
Okay.
A draft addendum.
Could I ask for staff to clarify for me what it believes it heard from Councilmember Dor?
Just now, there's one specific thing, and then there's a number of other things that were identified previously. Are you asking specifically about what?
Yeah. The, well, all the council members made a number of suggestions about potential revisions to the addendum. I think what we just heard from Councilmember Dor was that the, a feasibility study would really take a holistic look, not only at pickleball, but also of tennis specifically.
Not the feasibility study, but the addendum itself.
Oh, and to mention that in like a revised addendum itself, just to make, make clear to capture all the feedback that the City Council has provided tonight related to the addendum, and if we do bring back a revision, that it would be reflected there, including that one piece.
Thanks. What I heard from Councilmember Dor, and which sounded like a good idea without thinking about the implications to all of you, is actually editing the addendum and making it more comprehensive to not just be the pickleball addendum, but the racket sport, only pickleball and tennis addendum. But I'm guessing you can repurpose 95% of what you wrote, just editing kind of the language, so not having, making you redo data or go out and really seek more information about the number of tennis courts here and there, but somehow changing the, the framing of this to be about kind of looking at, yes, pickleball is what spurred this addendum, but it's really a more holistic addendum.
Yes, that is what I was intending to say.
So I don't know.
Of this being, not just about the feasibility study being for both, but the, the addendum. Because, because there's not a separate section that's just tennis, now there's this new section, can this be also broader in scope for both tennis and pickleball?
So, so my question then for staff, based on what Councilmember Dor said, and my general support of what Councilmember Dor said, is, is that a thing? Or is that like, oh my gosh, now you have to start from the very beginning, and now you're like hiring another consultant to start working on this, and has to go back to the Parks and Rec Commission and whatever? Because if, if that's the case, I probably would back off it and not be supportive and say, let's just go with the pickleball thing. But if there is a way to quote easily modify this, so it's a broader addendum, I would be interested.
If I may, I believe it's possible to repurpose the addendum as written to just make sure that tennis is included in the scope. And I think really where the rubber meets the road would be in a feasibility study. So staff wasn't taking the direction that we would do a lot more analysis and study before bringing back a revision. So I do think it's, it's doable. We'd need to work with the city manager and the mayor as far as the timing, but I think it's achievable.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Thanks, I appreciate that clarity. But, and now I want to understand like sort of a sequencing or timeline, because the council has asked for, or at least some members of the council has asked for some action separate from the addendum returning. And so it'd be great to understand like where staff is at on those items, like right, or whether to some degree it sees it not possible to really action on like those items outside of this addendum where you get the feasibility. Like, is it that like, oh, we can address the noise, but then going further than that, whether it's the, the, the sort of the netting, or it's, it's the pathways, that stuff really can't be addressed outside of, of this, this addendum?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for that question. The city manager may want to chime in, because I think now we're kind of venturing into some discussions about resource allocations for projects like repaving. So I do think it's sort of dependent on what the specific projects are. So something like hanging a noise curtain is probably fairly simple, repaving paths is a little bit larger.
Let's scratch the repaving and just the noise, like, right? Because there seem to be very, very much.
Yeah, that seems to be doable, sort of under general tennis court maintenance. That's something that we, you know, there's a current need, it's been identified, we want, we want to try to address it. It doesn't really need further study as far as whether the need exists. I think that's known. So it's possible to move on that now. As I sit here, I can't say like how soon we'd be able to implement it, but I think our intent would be, we know that spring and summer is coming, usage tends to pick up, the days become longer, so we'd like to try to have at least identified some potential solutions by then.
If you, it would be good to have some communication with some of the residents there as you identify things, and I'd be more than happy to help with that or walking door to door, whatever it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take you up on that offer.
Are there any other questions or comments for staff on this item?
Well, I guess just, do you know what we, like what, so what, what's going to happen next? Like, what have you taken from this conversation?
So I think that there's a, two parts. First is really address some of the current issues identified at Nealon Park specifically around the current courts and the noise. Second is to bring back a revised addendum that captures the comments here, and work with the city manager and mayor to agendize that, but the goal is to have that done before the budget deliberations or in, in those, in that context, which would be May and June.
So does that, are we still on track to have the feasibility study come before the budget conversation, or is that now being pushed out and being?
My understanding was that the feasibility study is still part of the revised addendum, and that would come forward when the revised addendum comes forward, which would be in the context of the budget deliberations.
So when you're coming forward, you're bringing the revised addendum plus a discussion around what to include in a potential feasibility study?
Yes, I think that would be the intent. And then there might be two parts to that, the addendum, and then follow up with a little bit more discussion about the feasibility study in fairly short order, but, but yes, together.
And not to forget that Bell Haven Community Campus will be opening, and there's a lot of effort going there, I know. Okay, thank you.
We'll be writing the staff report at the Bell Haven Community Campus, which will be great.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Right, if there are no other questions or discussions on this item, we will take a 10-minute break? Five minutes on this item? We have our remaining items, our informational items, and Councilmember Report House. I need to take five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt.
Okay, having our city council back at our in-person deus, Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. And now we will move on to Item G, which is our informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff, in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Heron, do we have any public comment on the information items?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on Items G1, City Council Agenda Topics, or G2, the Quarter Four Police Department update, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or cell phone, please press star nine. This will be the final call for public comment on our informational items, G1 and G2. No hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Are there any questions or comments from city council members on the two agenda items in front of us, G1 and G2? All right, we'll move on to city manager's report. And for the city manager's report, I'll introduce our city manager, Justin Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So just a reminder that this Saturday is the council goal setting workshop from 10 to 2 here at the city council chambers. This Friday, the city's participating in a job fair, Public Service Career Fair, a number of other agencies focused on veterans, military personnel, and their families. So that's this Friday, March 1st, from 10 to 3 in Redwood City. There's more information on the city's website. And then finally, there's a few references to the Bell Haven Community Campus. And as of today, we're still on track for the temporary certificate of occupancy, a major milestone in the construction for next Friday, March 8. So we're looking forward to that major milestone. It'll still be 16 to 90 days until the facility would be ready for public use. But the temporary certificate of occupancy allows non-construction personnel to start to occupy the site to be able to fit out the building with the furniture and things like that. So looking forward to that milestone. And that's, that's it for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Moving to the next agenda item, which is I, city council member reports. Are there any reports from city council members since our February 13th city council meeting? Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you. Two updates from the different boards or committees, or whatever they are that I sit on. One is the Caltrain Local Policymakers Group, also known as LPMG, just that electrification is coming this year. Caltrain actually, on their right-of-way, had to cut down a couple, like the five trees near the station. And I think we all know from the recent storms how important it is that trees and electrical wires do not touch each other. And so the Caltrain electrification wires necessitated some of those trees coming down. So I just wanted to let people know. And that Caltrain also, I told the city manager, who I believe will be speaking with the mayor, that Caltrain is open to coming to council to give a short community presentation on what Menlo Park can expect with electrification, and also how Menlo Park can help be a good community partner to make sure that Caltrain is successful, implementing different policies that encourage employers to purchase go passes, other type of things like that. The other group is commute.org, and I got notification today that they are launching a community grant program for local community groups to do outreach to harder-to-reach populations about the offerings that commute.org has. And those are, and they're going to be having five $5,000 grants, and those applications, I believe, open on Monday. And the applications will be due at the end of March. So if you are affiliated with a community group that is interested in doing outreach about transportation options to underserved populations, check out commute.org, or see me, and I can forward you the email that I received about that program. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Dorr?
Yes, I have one report and two items I'd like to ask to agendize on the report. So I sit on the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, which the acronym is BOSCA. I'm also on the Board Policy Committee that meets every other month to discuss and decide what is on the agenda for the whole group. And in this last meeting, we talked about the, some of the goals for the future year's work plan. And I just wanted to share that I advocated for us to spend a little bit more time looking at grant opportunities. And so they're going to be putting together a tracking tool to help members explore resources to support water conservation and water supply issues and each of the, each of the member users within BOSCA. And so hopefully, that also can be a source of funding moving forward. And then on the two items I'd like to agendize, first, I'd like to ask city manager if we can agendize, or the mayor, I'm, this is the first time I've done this, so I actually don't know who to ask, but a request to look at revisiting approaches for a city reach code. It's a conversation that I'd appreciate us getting to have again. And should I say the second one as well? Okay, the second one is a request to continue a conversation about ALPRs, the Automatic License Plate Readers, for the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr. Yes. Vice Mayor Combs or Councilmember Nash, do you have a report out?
I actually have a question or follow-up from Councilmember Dorr's agenda item request. So first, the next thing is that those requests will be agendized for the council to discuss. But I just want to make sure it's clear when you say, continue the conversation about the license plate readers, what does that mean? Because when we had it before, the chief proposed a very specific plan. And is it, do we want that plan to come back to us again for, again, another bite of that apple? And I just think we should, you know, given that there are lots of stakeholders, we should be very clear about what, what we're doing next. And a conversation is ambiguous.
Sure. I would like to have a, I suppose, a different conversation, because I know things have changed both in our community as well as in the use of ALPRs in some of our neighboring communities. And so I think the, it seems like the proposal and our conversation might be different than the last conversation we had. And so when it's agendized, happy to go into more detail at that time.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr. I will connect with the city manager and follow the policy on how to request agendized items. Councilmember Nash, do you have a report out?
So, thank you. I do have a couple of report outs. First, from the South Bay, South Bayside Waste Management Authority, good news, which I'm sure Mayor Taylor actually worked on, and that is that the waste station is now available for recycling and also is transferred seven days a week from 8:00 AM to 5:00 AM. The transfer station is open from 8:00 AM to 5:00 AM. Thank you. 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday, both the transfer station and the public recycling station, which was a request from board, previous board members. It used to only be open five days a week. It is now open seven days a week, so that it should be much more accessible for everyone. And then the other exciting news, if we could, I have one thing to show, and that's for Peninsula Clean Energy. Last meeting last week, approved a three-year contract for single-family residential electrification, turnkey installation services. And there's three parts to this. One is the income-qualified, no-cost electrification, which has been done, but it's now whole-home electrification, and will also include some safety upgrades. And this is for low-income residents. There's also going to be a market-rate, low-cost electrification, where, which will be low-cost installation services to non-income qualified residents. And so that'll take advantage of bulk purchases, and also there will be technical services for market-rate residents. And then also for, there will be emergency water heater replacements. So a rapid replacement of failing gas water heaters with heat pump water heaters, and that'll be available as well. The income-qualified electrification should be up and running very, very soon. It's, the current program is oversubscribed, and so this will just be a continuation with more enhancements to it. The market-rate, low-cost electrification, and the emergency water heater replacements will be, should be up and running summertime. So that's all very exciting. In addition, part of this contract was to approve for the Menlo Parks, $2 million that Menlo Park will be providing, assuming that after it comes to council, for the Bell Haven electrification and low-cost electrification in the city, specifically for Bell Haven, as part of the state, the first tranche of the state grant. So that'll be very exciting to get that up and going. And the contract, assuming that council approves it, well, the contract is ready and waiting for the money to be approved by council and moved to PCE. So that was really exciting news, especially with the emergency water heater replacements, which is a big area where there are people who are interested in electrifying, and really, when there's an emergency, they can't do it. So this should help. And then finally, what I wanted, I wanted to, if I can find the piece of paper, was to report that there's on next Tuesday, the 5th, there is a Caltrain Electrification Community Meeting about electric train testing. And in that, they're going to be, it's a Zoom meeting, and I believe the city will be publicizing it soon, but it's since it's next Tuesday, I wanted to mention it. And this is the testing of the electric trains, and it's going to be between 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM, so overnight. And residents may hear additional noise during the testing hours, including grade crossing activations and train horns. So that's something that people should attend the community meeting, which will be publicized through the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And I have a report out. I attended an event on Saturday that was called the Soulful Event over at Mount Olive Church. It was a Black History event that was given by Crime Prevention Narcotics and Drugs Education Center that was formed in 1968 by Dr. H.L. Bostic, her concern for the rising tide of alcohol and drug-related crime in the local community and through the nation. The community church goers are keeping her legacy alive by honoring and celebrating the breadth and depth of Black, Black history through providing space for all. In attendance was myself, along with Chief Norris, Corporal Ferguson, Officer Baxter, K-9 Officer Adone, Officer Berenvia, and also Officer Wallbridge. We also had two firefighters there. The only name that I was able to get was Joey, firefighter Joey. Thank you so much for attending. And then lastly, and this was brought up during public comment, an elder passed away from one of the churches in my community. And what I did, kind of find the actual verbiage, her services were today. And because I was not able to attend, I made sure that the family received something to show support, which was a certificate making February 14th Mother Jo Dean Elwin Campbell Day, honoring the contributions to the city of Menlo Park. I believe her church has been here since the early 1960s, and just wanted to make sure that, that she was honored. And if there are no more council member report outs, this meeting is adjourned.